Welcome everyone and Happy New Year, Happy 2020. My name is Donna Lake and I'm the Master of Ceremonies. This is new because the past of Joe Eaters has done this. Joe, where are you Joe? Can you stand up please? I want to acknowledge Joe has been the Master of Ceremonies. He's sat next to me for a number of years. He's been the First Councilman. I want to acknowledge all the work that you've done Joe. Thank you very much for being here. We'll start off with the invocation. Your brother Chuck Smith, the Pastor of the Valley Church, is going to do the invocation but he is ill. And so we are very fortunate indeed. We have Josh Docson from the Vineyard Church to do our invocation.
Chuck has much to appear. Let's pray. God as we enter a new year, it is full of challenges and opportunities. And God, the challenges are greater and we know your power is greater. So God this morning, I want to ask for three things for all these elected officials and for all of us as residents in Norwood. God, I ask for selflessness, that we would seek not our own good or the good of a certain party, but the good of each other and the good of us all. God, I ask for a spirit of forgiveness, that we bury any hatchets that threaten to harm and divide us, that we work through conflict face to face and not back to back. Finally, God, I ask for a spirit of unity, that we believe the best of each other instead of assuming the worst, and we work together for the good of these three square miles that we call home. And God, I acknowledge that none of this is possible apart from you, so we ask for your help and your presence in the year ahead. In Jesus' name.
You will all rise now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your honor for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so long.
Before we have the whole Capitol elected officials, I'd like to just think of us as the town and the mayor, the President of the Council. We have three remaining Councilpersons from the last council. We have three duly-elected Councilpeople who were elected by a total of less than 25 votes. If you say no, it doesn't matter. And then we have one returning member who did before we just began. So we're thankful for these people. We also have our returning Law Director and our returning Auditor who are both re-elected. And we have Tom Loney, our Treasurer, who does not have a re-election. So those are your elected officials for 2020. So with that, I would just have a roll call. Peter Schneider, Mayor. Keith Moore, Law Director. James Stith, Auditor. Ken Miracle, President of the Council. James Boswell, Councilman. Michael Gabbard, Councilman. Matthew Tracy, Councilman. Chris Couch, Board One. Eric Donato, Board Two. Eric Thompson, Board Three. And John Reagan, Board Four. At the organization meeting that took place at 10:00 this morning, Murray Woodruff, who was elected Board of Council, Murray, are already here, can you stand? And we are going to make all of the reading of all the ordinances and letters in the House of Representatives and Councils. So with that, we would like to begin with the oath of office. Each of these offices has its essence of honor. Murray Woodruff, Mayor. And we begin with Peter Schneider. He will be sworn in by Baker Thomas.
I, Victor Schneider. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws.
To abide by the Constitution and laws.
And of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office as.
And to execute the duties of my office as Mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in a manner.
And in a manner.
Which demonstrates the trust.
Demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me.
That has been placed in me.
By the citizens of Norwood.
Citizens of Norwood.
So help me God.
Now my friends, all the orderly transits. Thank you very much. Next is Keith Moore. And he will be sworn in by Elijah Cooper.
I.
I.
Keith D. Moore.
Keith D. Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office as Law Director to the best of my ability.
And to execute the duties of my office as Director of Law to the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust which has been placed in me.
In a manner which demonstrates the trust which has been placed in me.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
Next is James Stith, Auditor. And he will be sworn in by Alan Stith.
I, Jim Stith.
I, Jim Stith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office as Auditor.
And to execute the duties of my office as Auditor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me by the citizens of the City of Norwood.
Which has been placed in me by the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
Next is Mayor, who will be sworn in by his wife, Karen.
I, please state your name.
I, Ken Miracle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
Laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office.
And to execute the duties of my office.
As President of Norwood City Council.
President of Norwood City Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In a manner which demonstrates the trust.
In a manner which demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me.
Which has been placed in me.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, that's Councilman James Boswell, who will be sworn in by his wife, Karen.
I, James Boswell, do solemnly swear.
I, James Boswell, do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office as Council at Large.
And to execute the duties of my office as Council at Large.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust which has been placed in me.
And so in a manner which demonstrates the trust
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
Next is Michael Gabbard, who will be sworn in by his grandmother, Gabbard.
I, state your name.
I, Michael Gabbard.
Do solemnly swear to abide by.
Do solemnly swear to abide by.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute my duties of my office as Council at Large.
And to execute my duties in my office as Council at Large.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
In a manner which demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me.
Which has been placed in me.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next is Matthew Tracy, Councilman at Large, who will be sworn in by his grandmother.
State your name, please.
I, Matthew Tracy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and the ordinances of the City of Norwood.
To execute the duties of my office.
To execute the duties of Council at Large.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In a manner which demonstrates the trust which has been placed in me.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust which has been placed in me.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
Next, we have Chris Elch, Council Board One, who will be sworn in by her.
I, state your name.
I, Chris Elch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office as.
And to execute the duties of my office as Councilman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me.
Which has been placed in me.
By the citizens of Norwood. By the citizens of Norwood, I'm sorry.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next is Eric Thompson, who will be sworn in by his wife, Karen.
State your name.
Eric Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To abide by.
To abide by.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office as.
And to execute the duties of my office as Councilman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me.
Which has been placed in me.
By the City of Norwood.
By the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
Next is Eric Thompson, Board Three, who will be sworn in by his wife, Karen.
I, Eric Thompson.
I, Eric Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office.
And to execute the duties of my office as Councilman, Board Three.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me.
Which has been placed in me.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
Now we have John Reagan, Councilman Board Four, who will be sworn in by his wife, Karen.
I, John Reagan, do solemnly swear.
I, John Reagan, do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office as.
And to execute the duties of my office as.
Norwood City Councilman, Board Four.
Norwood City Councilman, Board Four.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me.
Which has been placed in me.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
By the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I see this is a state family, Mayor. And these people are on the House of Representatives office. Their families are definitely involved. So thank you to the families for being here today and for swearing in. I would be honored if I didn't acknowledge Mayor Boswell, who has gone out like 16 years of being there. I know it is his birthday too. And there are other elected officials. I see Jared Thompson's here. If you were an elected official, you would ever serve in the capacity of the city. Thank you very much. We now have our keynote speech by our colleague, Mr. Stahl, Mayor.
Happy Mother, Happy Mother President, members of the Council, very best, Mayor and Mr. Williams, esteemed guests, community members, friends and family. I really want to start off by saying thank you for the trust you have placed in me. It's an honor and a privilege to represent the community of Norwood as Mayor. Thank you. The Norwood I live in, the one that I grew up in, has changed. Some of my honest memories were running the streets on foot or on a bicycle exploring the world. In the seventies, there were many more hidden spaces to explore, explore. There's still, to an extent, kids have a back way up at the end of Beach Street while planning our company to get over to Waterworks Park. We have to cross the train tracks, it's a bit dangerous, but you could go up. We always, we could go up the steps, on Highland Avenue, go up the steps to Tower Park. We could go through the tunnel under Interstate 71 and Hire's Lane. Go back in there and sort of explore. So there were a lot of fun things to do. There were also some subway tunnels. And you could go into, don't tell my mom that we went into this thing. They're all closed up now, so kids can't get in them. But we had some fun with that. Clearly, it was more of a free-range type of activity that I had. And free-range for kids is not a real great word right now. But for my parents, it was to get out of the house. It wasn't free-range, it was out of the air. So we had to sort of have that at that time. Norwood's been a competitive. And I said it's been a force since 1888, when the village was incorporated. Quickly, the population grew. In 1902, 1902, we became a city. And that was, you know, that was really a great, great year for the city of Norwood. Maybe some of those people are here that remember those days. 1915 was another awesome time. This is the year that our incredible City Hall was dedicated, 1915. There really has to be noted that it was the women of Norwood who drove the effort to get City Hall built. It stands today as a beacon of the proud heritage that the city has. In 1980, it became listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And we need to take care of that grand building on the Pike that was built to last. We take for granted the incredible location of the City of Norwood at the crossroads and in the heart of the county. But it was not always so true. It took planning and leadership to make Norwood what it is today. Yes, the old native trails came through the area. But it was the people who blazed the bigger trails. They blazed them to roads and made main routes coming through Norwood. That has been the foundation of Norwood's success. Our forefathers set us on a path of progress and a vision, a City of Norwood that would be a leader in the county and state. We owe a great debt of gratitude to the community members, citizens, leaders, much like these gentlemen, Senator Don and Maria, much like the other members, that have done such a great job and laid the foundation for this community. We've been blessed with a big industry that has kept us moving forward. But over the past 30 years, we've seen some change. We now have a dynamic mix of companies, diverse and prosperous. I say that we are better off with the mobile companies. A new growth of diversity. The mix on our income base is more flexible and we are able to adapt and overcome smaller challenges. The old saying of don't put all your eggs in one basket holds true. Our eggs right now are spread out all over and we are more stable and secure than we were before. I don't say it elsewhere, but it's not. Now, we really, our administration as well as other departments must be flexible and stay on top of all the good things taking place. The staff at City Hall must be sharpened on top of it. It requires a particular skill set. We have to adapt and grow and embrace positive changes. It's a continuous improvement process. We need to adopt new policies and procedures, embrace the technology that's here, and literally welcome and prove it. Independence comes at a price. We've all been fiercely dependent on the City of Norwood. It's, we've had the ability to provide a higher level of service to our community members. You know, when it came to the challenges that came before, our forefathers really rallied to those and they really worked hard to keep that image. Maybe we just weren't joyers. There were a lot of communities around us that were joyers. Norwood never joined. That's something that's been a challenge for us. But we've overcome it. We've kept our head down, we've kept working, and we keep the city moving. Over the past few decades, we faced many financial challenges and we tackled them in the only way we could help. We hunkered down and rode through them. As we get beyond some of those challenges, we feel strongly that we must leverage every penny that we have to make the most out of it. In years past, we proceeded with extreme caution because the thought has always been that to accept that funding if it was outside sources and there were strings attached. Now I agree in some instances, this is actually. Now, I agree in some instances, this is actually true, but we have to take a closer look at the positive and what the negative is, and really make decisions based on need. The business of the city cannot be ran like a household income. Goal-setting for a possible, possible income is much different than a community of over nineteen thousand people that expect a return on the funds. If the state government, federal government, they have funds available, tax money, funds that we can get, tax money, and they're willing to invest them in our community, we need to reach out and make sure we're getting them. I'm a hundred percent sure that, that we, pretty much all of us have paid state and federal taxes, so that's, that's our money, it's my money, it's our money. Let's get it invested in our community, and we'll be working hard to make that, make sure that happens. When we talk about independence in the City of Norwood, we are independent, but we're not isolations, right? There's no nature difference. Being able to stand alone is good. Hiding from or ignoring new and innovative ways to do the job of government is bad. In this day and age, with collaboration and working with others, there are quick, efficient, and cost-effective ways to overcome hurdles. We need to be involved in organizations and help the city in ways to provide services. We, we should be taking advantage of purchase programs within county and state more often. Not only do it, but we need to take more advantage and really work to make sure that we're, we're doing everything possible. It's stated that, uh, too often, Norwood is surrounded, and it makes, it makes doing business more harder, much harder, excuse me, more hard. But, but we are a Hamilton County community, and we have other communities that are willing to collaborate to help cut their costs as well as ours. We need to be open-minded to adopting and implementing change that helps the City of Norwood provide critical services that we all feel safe and supported. We also need to look at those areas and make sure that they are running as cost-effectively and, and as efficiently as possible. We have resources to share. The City of Norwood should be a leader in Hamilton County, and we will be a leader in Hamilton County. How do we, how do we make the most out of our city, and how do we maintain our independence without losing? What makes the city this great city, what it is? Those are tough questions. You know, I have, I think I really have the attention of some of those people who worked in the city for years or are working in the city now. I'll tell you, it's important that, that we are, you know, it's, it's very important that as we work on these improvements and changes, the people who work for, protect, and provide services for the City of Norwood will be involved in those decisions. These studies, plans, and timelines will state clearly what the goal is from the beginning, the route that is to be explored. We'll have a start date, we'll have a stop date, and we'll follow through to be successful. You know, sometimes plans don't work out exactly as you think they should. That was proven to be a little earlier today, but that's okay. We continue, we persevere, we keep moving towards a goal, and the goal is positive change and positive things for the City of Norwood. So, if some of this makes people nervous, well, so be it. Be a little nervous, that's fine. You can feel a little nervous, doesn't have to be your own. This is really positive. I, I want people looking at what they can do. If a person has a specific area that they have intimate knowledge, internal knowledge, and they know, and have a way to do it better, I want to hear from them over the next few months. We need ideas and suggestions from you. It has been proven time and again that the current team members of the organization, and this holds true whether you're a municipal organization or whether you're a corporate organization, whatever setting you're in manufacturing, the people that are doing the job typically come up with the best solutions, the best, the most cost-effective, and quite frankly, most of the time, easy to implement solutions. So we want to hear from those people, it's important. So, as a community member, how do you get involved? How do you help your local government operate better? First and foremost, recognize that positive changes are taking place at city hall. I've got that number on here. My first said, recognize that positive changes are taking place at city hall, and we'll be implementing it throughout the City of Norwood's organizations. From this day forward, I'm going to put my finger, from this day forward, we will be working to provide service to your community in a more friendly manner. We will be implementing some of the concepts of good to great. We have departments that are good, but they just aren't great. We will be working to make them great. We will be working to hone and sharpen our resident services skills, customer service skills. It's important, it's important that you, as community members, recognize, we're here for you, we're here working for you, and we're trying to make it better. And we're going to work on those customer service skills in city hall, and we're going to make sure that you recognize that city hall is your building. Stop by, talk to us, tell us what's going on, we want to know. And if there's problems, we want to hear about it throughout the community, let's make those things work. So, the next step is how do we make sure improvements that are here, that are made today, last a long time, sustainability. Built to last, much like city halls, built to last, that's a substantial building. We've got to put policies and procedures and processes in place that are built to last, because what you saw today is newly elected officials, and it seems like there's constant turnover, which constant change, but we've got to put systems in place where you go, this works, let's hold on to it, and people recognize it. That's an important part. For, for community members, you know, speak to friends about Norwood, defend Norwood. We will do our best to communicate, communicate all the good things that are happening in the city. Conversation has to change about the City of Norwood. We need to make sure that you around the county hear about all these things that are happening in Norwood. So many positive, enriching, life-changing organizations and citizen-led initiatives that start right here in Norwood. And, and you know what? We need to let people know, you guys need to let people know, we'll do our best to communicate from the city buildings, but you guys need to let people know all the good that's going on in the City of Norwood. That's the only way we're going to change the conversation about Norwood. Many, many great neighbor-to-neighbor as well as city service efforts take place on a daily basis, enrich our lives, and those in and around Norwood. For long, for too long, we've heard negativity, I've seen. We're moving in a positive direction in the city, and the only way to overcome the negative persona is to speak up and let people know that the city that you live in, that outsiders poke fun at, is, is not really the city that, that they understand, so it's important. You know, give them then, I said, give them a minute and think of three things, three things that really make your community great, right? Be ready to help people understand. Just think of those three things. It's sort of like that, you'll hear people talk about that quick elevator speech, what, what makes things, what makes tech? Three things that are good, good for you, the reason why you love the City of Norwood. That's important. It says here to pause, I don't think I'm supposed to pause as much as saying, you know, give me a second, pause, and think of those three things. But if you can think of those three things, when they start one day, and you say, well, you love Norwood, these are the three things that make it special to me, you can change, we can really change it. So, there are also operational items we can help with. Public Works, our Public Safety Equal Department, they all need your help, right? They need, they're, they, we need all the eyes out there, and we need the information coming back in. They can't be everywhere, they can't see every challenge, if you see something going on, you're going to be poorly. We will, we have implemented a work order system in the next few months, so when you call in a work order, you will be able to get a work order number, and you'll go into a system, track it. You'll be able to take that work order number and say, hey, what's going on with this work order? Call, call back into Public Works, back into the city offices, and be able to say, this is the work order I called in, when's the due time, what's going on there? That's an important part. We need to put those checks and balances in place. Department heads will be able to use a FIFO system, so first in, first out. So if you call a work order, it shouldn't be two months before it's taken care of, about thirty other things are taken care of. There are a few, few people out there that are like first in, first out, so. So, we're going to be utilizing that. We need to give a clear direction to all the people who work for, work with, for the City of Norwood. We need to put systems in place, plan, monitor, and then close out those work orders. We also need to be able to understand where and how the work is completed. Let's use actual data and make decisions when we can, and the workforce, the tools, and the staff, they need to be, to be successful. Then and only then, we will be allocating our resources properly and making the most out of the resources that, that the community has. Let me close by, and if you like, let me close by, I've got a few more pages. Let me close by saying, we are up to the task at hand. I'm proud, we have a great house, we have some people that are very intelligent and understand how municipalities are, and they are willing to make tough decisions. They want information, and they're going to get that information from the mayor's office to help them understand why certain things are critical for the city around them. We will be working hard to address the needs of the community, preserve our history, very important, implement new plans, policies, and procedures to make the City of Norwood overall a great community that we are all proud of. When you look for the bad in income, you, you surely will find it, and some, some people do that a lot. I challenge you to look for the good, be a po, be a positive influence to others. And I think Donald was one of the people that said at the council meeting, live well, treat each other well, and then we can all live in a great community, the community that we love, the City of Norwood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I would like to introduce Alex, Norwood City School, for you, so it's beautiful, proud of her. My husband's so regressed with this, it's not his school, but it will always be his school. And it brings flowers, we, um, donated the flowers for today, but I would love to go to the school. To conclude, we'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of those that we have lost from the City of Norwood, and also to remember those who are serving and who live here, serving us as first responders who are not able to leave today. They are the reason why we are able to be here today, so if you could just have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you. Before we have the dedication, I would like to invite you all to a cake and, and lunch reception at City Hall. You may be following on this, so, um, we have. Uh, one, one of the others, um, there, there's a gentleman.
Mic's off. The mic is off.
No. Thank you very much. I'm very honored for today, it's been my pleasure. I'd like to call Pastor Scott, he's here to the stand, Pastor of Zion and the Church of Christ, and be my fellow pop here as our dedication.
Newbie eleven officials, a new year, a new decade, we can call the twenties. It's a scary commission. Whatever we may call it, whatever it turns into, we surely need God's blessing. So I invite you to call upon God's Spirit. That God would bless you with a peace of mind, strength of spirit, that you commit your whole self to improving your relationships in this community. I ask that God bless you with a soft heart, that you may approach everything with a sense of compassion and kindness, to commit to acts of justice and equality. That we also may be blessed with eyes to see the indelible image of our Creator in each and every one of us, that despite our party, despite our race, our sexual orientation, that we may come together, seeing that we are all children of God, worthy of dignity and respect. Amen. Go on, please.
That concludes our ceremony. Thank you so much for coming. We hope to see you back at City Hall for some lunch and groceries.